All right, everyone, welcome to the June twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-four regular city council meeting. Time is now seven o'clock P. M. We will start with the pledge of allegiance, followed by a moment of silent meditation.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, first item is roll call.
Mayor Scott Nickel.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Frank Gerton.
Present.
Councilmember Hamilton Boone.
Here.
Councilmember Shawna Hume.
Here.
Councilmember Adam Dyer.
Here.
And next item is excusable council members. We're all here, so we can skip along to additions, deletions, or changes to the agenda, if any. Does anyone in council have any suggested changes? Hearing none, we'll move on to presentations, proclamations, and introductions. The item on there is, excuse me, is an Arbor Day proclamation. Is there anybody here that this needs to be presented to? Okay, that will save me from, I will not read the proclamation. I've signed it, so that takes care of that. Next item is approval of minutes for the regular council meeting from June eleventh, two thousand twenty-four. So you want to council have any comments? If not, I would entertain a motion.
Motion to approve the minutes of June eleventh.
Second.
A motion by councilmember Hume, second by deputy mayor Gerton. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries five zero. Onto reports, with the city manager's report being the first thing. City manager, coffee.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, city council members, residents gathered here and watching at home. The first item is authorization for Mayor Nickel to sign a letter of support for continued justice assistance grant receipts being used by Brevard County Sheriff's Office. Currently, the sheriff's office provides prisoner transport for the city and other cities in agreement that all police agencies allow the sheriff's office to keep their portions of the burn justice assistance grant to cover the, and the sheriff's department covers the remaining cost. Attached is the letter of support for the mayor's signature. I request the council authorize the mayor to sign that.
Okay, thank you. I would entertain a motion.
Make a motion to sign the letter in support of continuation of the justice assistance grant receipts.
Second.
I have a motion by councilmember Dyer, second by councilmember Boone. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries five zero.
All right, next item is the Florida League of Cities Voting Delegation Selection. The Florida League of Cities Annual Conference is coming up in August, and the league is requesting the city council designate a voting delegate for the conference.
Okay, thank you. I have historically done this, and I'm ninety percent sure I'll be attending the conference. So, you know, would it make sense for us to also nominate an alternate? I think that'd be a good idea. It's possible I might have a surgery scheduled for that timeframe, so, but I don't know yet. With that, I would entertain a nomination.
I nominate Mayor Nickel to be the primary if he's available.
Second.
I have a motion by councilmember Hume, second by deputy mayor Gerton. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries five zero. Now I'd entertain a nomination for an alternate voting delegate. Anybody want to step up and volunteer for that?
Is everybody going?
I'll step up.
I nominate Frank Gerton.
Okay, I have a nomination from council, councilmember Hume, and a second by councilmember Boone. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries five zero.
Next item is Police Pension Board Trustee Resignation and Authorization to Solicit Resumes for Consideration of Appointment. As attached, Police Pension Board Trustee David Brock submitted a resignation on June twenty-first, effective immediately. In the past, when there had been an opening, the city has solicited resumes through the Harbor Highlights, and the police chief in my position have reviewed the candidates and made a recommendation at a council meeting for the council to consider. An alternate course of action would be for the council to select the resident without input from the chief and I. Of note, all pension board positions are required to be reappointed, or new appointments made by October one, two thousand twenty-four, for this year. Therefore, staff recommends the council accept trustee Brock's resignation and authorize staff to solicit resumes.
Okay. As far as the method of choosing the representative, I think we should stick with the way it is. I think it's important, especially given the nature of the position, that we receive the input like we always have before we, as a council, make a decision on that. Does anyone in council have input on that? And if so, please state it. If not, I would entertain a motion.
I make a motion that we advertise for the, that we accept the resignation of Mr. Brock and that we advertise for a replacement in the next issue of Harbor Highlights.
Second.
A motion by councilmember Hume, second by deputy mayor Gerton. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries five zero.
Next item, muck removal project update. Staff attended another coordination meeting with representatives of Brevard County and Satellite Beach last week. Key takeaways is Brevard County will be rebidding the Igali Causeway Muck Removal Project because they had received one bid and it was fifty percent above budget. Therefore, the anticipated start date for the county's port project, which is ahead of our project in the queue, is two thousand twenty-five, and that is a three-year project. So, the estimated start date for our project now is pushed back to two thousand twenty-eight to two thousand thirty. Satellite Beach is working on the draft MOU to allow the two cities work together. We anticipate attorneys to be reviewing those in early July and them to be on the respective cities' agendas for the second meeting of July for consideration. If the MOU is executed, the city, myself and city manager Barker, Satellite Beach have tendively agreed to jointly pursue grant funding for the two projects. There's been two good matches identified that we think we stand a good chance of getting additional funding for. Some of the details of the project is that the work will stay away a minimum of ten feet from seawalls, further where seawalls are structured, and thirty feet away from the terminus end of canals. And the city of Satellite Beach has agreed to allow the eventual contractor to use their current fire department as a staging area for our portion of the work, which, anyone who knows city property in our city, we do not have a lot of spare land for contractors to use for a couple of years to store equipment and vehicles. May revenue and expenditure report is attached, the general fund reflecting two-thirds of the year, receipts of nine point three million, or sixty-two percent of the budget, and expenditures of six point four million, or forty-three percent of the budget. When one-time monies are removed, total revenues equal eighty-two percent. The ARPA fund has expenditures of nine hundred and twenty-two thousand, or thirty-one percent. Update on a couple of projects, the exotic removal project along South Patrick Drive. Public Works staff completed the sodding today, thereby closing out that project. The Algonquin Sports Complex baffle box design, RFQ. Two firms responded to the request for qualifications. A follow-up evaluation meeting is scheduled for next Tuesday with a confirmation of ranking of the firms scheduled for the next council meeting. Legislative tracker is attached. The next one will conclude this year. Of note, Senate Bill two eighty, dealing with short-term rentals, was sent to the governor's office on June seventeenth, so we should know very shortly if he's going to sign that, let it become law, or veto it. A couple employee recognitions, police officer Detective Claremont. Chief Butler received a thank-you card from a resident. Officer Detective Claremont helped a resident who accidentally locked her dog in a vehicle and didn't know how to get her out. Also, Information Technologies Director Hamilton received a very complimentary email from the West Melbourne Assistant City Manager regarding our first livestream council meeting. Tendive agendas for the next meeting, first reading of ordinance two thousand twenty-four oh three to amend the current noise ordinance, presentation of the FY twenty-three audit, and previous mention of confirmation of the RFQ qualification for statements. Of note, on January ninth, we will have a workshop at five thirty P. M. dealing with review of fee schedule and proposed employee, enhanced employee benefits. And that concludes my report, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you.
In this July night?
I have a question. The, with the muck removal, is the distance from the seawall, which is the minimum of ten feet, is that a standard used by the county or a standard used by what the Army Corps of Engineers requires? Would you happen to know? One of, one of the aspects of this project is you, cities or counties hire a, an engineering firm to oversee the work. And their recommendation is to keep things ten feet away from seawalls because not all seawalls are created equally. Some seawalls sadly are not put in as deep as they should. Some seawalls are not in good shape. And so, the concept of staying away from the seawall is to not damage private seawalls. So, a lot of the seawalls in the canals in this city are owned by the homeowners, and it's a safety measure. The design of the muck removal is not a straight down, straight across. It's a V-shaped. And so, there would be some sloping of sediment from the ten feet to the center of the canals. But, as mentioned previously, this is a muck removal project, not a dredging operation. So, it's a best practice.
Okay, thank you. So, we do not have Carl with us tonight, is that correct? Move on to council comments. I'll start with deputy mayor Gerton.
I pass.
Councilmember Boone.
That was my one remark.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Councilmember Hume.
Nothing.
Nothing for me either. Fastest one ever, I'm pretty sure. Next is public comments on agenda items only. If anyone out there wants to speak on an agenda item, step forward, state your name and address, and you'll have three minutes to speak. Hearing none, we'll move, we'll go past unfinished business, since we don't have any. We'll move on to new business. Item number five, which is public hearing, second reading of ordinance number two thousand twenty-four dash zero-two, adding paid fire department personnel to the Florida retirement system. This is for potential adoption on second reading ordinance number two thousand twenty-four dash zero-two, adding paid fire department personnel to the city's Florida retirement system plan. I'll read the ordinance into the record, ordinance number two thousand twenty-four dash zero-two, an ordinance of the city of Indian Harbor Beach, Brevard County, Florida, relating to adding special risk membership category into the Florida retirement system to include paid members of the Indian Harbor Beach Fire Department, providing for severability, repeal, codification, and an effective date. City manager, coffee.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Historically, the city has participated in the Florida retirement system and pension plans for non-collectively bargained employees. We currently have three classes of regular, senior management, and deferred retirement option. With the addition of a paid chief this year, FRS informed us we'd need to adopt an ordinance authorizing addition of a special risk member category. The attached ordinance, two thousand twenty-four oh two, accomplishes this requirement. Lastly, FRS informs the city that we would be able to purchase back the time between Chief Lewis's eligibility, start date, and effective date of this ordinance. In accordance with state statutes, a business impact estimate was developed and is attached and posted on our website. Therefore, staff recommends city council adopt on second reading ordinance, two thousand twenty-four oh two, adding paid fire department personnel to the city's Florida retirement system plan.
Okay, thank you. Being that this is a second reading of the ordinance, this is a public hearing. If anyone from the public wishes to speak on this item, please step forward and state your name and address, and you'll have three minutes. Hearing none, I will close the public hearing and bring it back to council for discussion or a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the second reading of the ordinance, two thousand twenty-four dash zero-two.
Second.
A motion by councilmember Dyer, second by councilmember Boone. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries five zero. All right, item number six is resolution number seven fifty-four, which is opting out of the live, live local act property tax exemption. This is potential approval of resolution number seven fifty-four, opting out of the live, live local act property tax exemption from January first, two thousand twenty-five, through December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-six. I'll read the resolution into the record, resolution number seven fifty-four, a resolution of the city of Indian Harbor Beach, Brevard County, Florida, electing to not exempt certain property under section one ninety-six point one nine seven eight, subparagraph three, subparagraph O or zero, can't tell which one that is, I think that's an O, as enacted by chapter two thousand twenty-four dash one five eight, laws of Florida, and providing an effective date. City manager, coffee.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I will summarize the best I can. If anybody has specific questions, I'll delve into the details. The Live Local Act approved during the two thousand twenty-three session was meant to encourage construction of affordable housing to address housing shortages. So, one of the elements was an ad valorem tax reduction for eligible properties built and rented out for specific incomes. During the two thousand twenty-four session, the legislature approved a bill that would allow municipalities and counties to opt out of this exemption under certain circumstances. The city of Indian Harbor Beach qualifies for this opt-out. Although staff does not believe the economic condition of the city is going to see any affordable housing projects start in the future, opting out of this is a safeguard to protect the city's tax base and fiscal health. There is a study done countywide that is attached. At the date of this drafting of this memo, Brevard County and the city of West Melbourne had opted out of the tax exemption using this same study. Therefore, this resolution will be forwarded to the Brevard County Property Appraisers and cover the time period between January one, two thousand twenty-five, and January one, two thousand twenty-seven. Therefore, staff recommends council adopt resolution seven fifty-four, opting out of the live local act property tax exemption for newly constructed multifamily developments, provide affordable housing within certain income thresholds.
Okay, thank you. Does anyone in council? Does anyone in council have any questions for Mr. Coffee or any comments? Frank, anything?
No, I think it's cut dry.
No, I'm good.
Okay, I do not have any comments either. Seeing no comments from council, I'd entertain a motion.
Make a motion to adopt Resolution Number 754, A Resolution of the City of Indian Harbor Beach, Brevard County, Florida, electing to not exempt certain property under section 196.1978-30 as enacted by chapter 2024-158, Laws of Florida, and providing an effective date.
Second.
A motion by Councilmember Boone, second by Deputy Mayor Gerton. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries five zero. Item number seven, school year 2024-25, School Resource Officer Memorandum of Understanding. This is to authorize the city manager to execute the memorandum of understanding for reimbursement of up to $72,000 for a school resource officer at Ocean Breeze Elementary School for school year 2024-2025. City Manager Coffee.
The MOU for the upcoming school year has a bump in pay from the current approximately $68,000. Of note, as in years past, it only covered the traditional school year. The new MOU now covers extended school year, i.e. what we used to call summer school. At this time, Ocean Breeze Elementary does not anticipate a summer school session occurring during the duration of this MOU. Staff recommend city council authorize myself to execute the proposed MOU from Brevard Public Schools.
Okay, thank you. Does anyone in council have any questions? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the MOU for school resource officers for 2024-2025 for reimbursement.
Second.
A motion by Councilmember Dyer, second by Councilmember Hume. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries five zero. All right, now on to public forum. I have some speaker cards here. When I call your name, please come up and state your name and address, and you'll have three minutes to speak. And as some of you know, I strictly enforce that. So I'll start off with Angela Hill.
Okay, so as you all work through the, oh, Angela Hill, 123 Lancha Circle, Indian Harbor Beach. As you all work through the drafting of our updated noise ordinance, I'm particularly interested in how the council is arriving at the threshold of decibels for restaurants located in close proximity to residential buildings and how that will be enforced before you cut your next draft on the 9th. I watched the livestream of the last town meeting on this issue, and 65 was a number that the mayor mentioned as being under consideration. This weekend was particularly noisy. For the sake of providing data based on what I'm hearing, I took some video Friday night from my patio, and the decibel level ranged from like 59 to 72. And it goes up and down and up and down. And I was wondering, you know, would that be captured as a violation? I had tried previously sharing a clip of what I felt was an extremely loud example. But I also wanted to share just an instance like this where I was dark about the noise, but I didn't want to be a pest, and I held back on registering, registering a complaint. So if I may, this is just to be a very brief clip, just so you can get an idea of what it sounds like at this, what I felt was, what I felt was unacceptable. Okay, so that's just a little clip. I was curious as to whether we have any rules around how, how close in proximity a business that is zoned as a bar or a club could be to residential homes. And I learned today that we don't have any bars in Indian Harbor Beach, that the town doesn't really like bars. And as long as you have 51% of food sales, you're considered a restaurant. And those restaurants are then subject to the noise ordinance. So that sounds simple enough. But I would just say that when a person buys a property next to a restaurant, there's a perception that the type of music played would be relatively mellow, something you can converse over and enjoy your dinner. And if a person buys a property next to a bar or a club or a district that's like a center of a town's nightlife, they might reasonably expect to be exposed to more noise. I've heard the view that if you choose to live in a condo beachside, you essentially sign up for the noise. When I moved in 10 years ago, all I knew is I was behind a restaurant next to a paint store by a fast food restaurant. And I didn't buy a condo in Fort Lauderdale or South Beach. So I just never in my wildest dreams expected that I'd be here tonight and in this whole situation. I seriously agonize over the decision on when to call the police, and I've only done so on occasions when I felt the noise was wildly out of bounds, such as this past Saturday. But this does make me feel vulnerable to put myself out there, and I'm reticent to become that stereotypical complainer. And I'm probably at my, anyway, I just respectfully ask for you and your patience and just to think about this as you're making these important decisions. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, next is David Becker.
Thank you for the time. I'll get a brief, I'm losing my voice.
You still have to state your name and address.
David Becker, David Becker, 123 Lancha Circle. I won't try not to be redundant is what I'm saying, because Angela's already covered some of it. I also took a video on Saturday night when the music was particularly loud. As Angela's mentioned, we really do struggle with the idea of calling the police. It's not something we're a fan of doing to our neighbors. But we would just expect that hopefully they would consider, maybe not realizing how loud it is on our balcony right by their restaurant. So I was also hoping that maybe I could share a clip with you on Saturday night. It's not too long. This is, oh shoot. This is one of those particular nights when the music was very loud. You know, it's only the second time we've called the police, you know, to say that the music was excessively loud. You know, obviously, we're trying to be very reasonable about this and trying to, you know, we're not looking to be, you know, looking, I'm very pro-business myself. I don't, I always try and support the independent businesses in the town as much as possible. But this really has become a major, you know, intrusion in our, in our lifestyle at times, you know? That particular night, we had to move from our TV room. We couldn't watch the TV because the sound through the hurricane doors. And over the volume, our TV was so loud that we had to move to the other side of the apartment, up in the front of the building, in the guest room area, where we just watched TV on our laptop. So, you know, and that's again, I don't know if you guys realize how loud it is there. And I, you know, I, you know, we're not trying to be unreasonable, but, you know, I just would like to, you know, I appreciate the opportunity to share this with you and just hope you'll take this into consideration as you're looking at rewriting the noise ordinance. And I was going to say again, I guess, I'm not sure how you, have you thought about having someone come to our balconies or just, again, you've heard it on video, but maybe to experience it firsthand. You know, we certainly would welcome anyone the opportunity to come over just to judge for themselves whether or not we're being reasonable or unreasonable about this. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next is John Kevin Dunlevy.
Good evening, I'm John Kevin Dunlevy, 121 Lancha Circle. Spent 14 years in the Air Force. Many of those years, I lived on the end of the runway for one week at a time. Rotated every three weeks. Said I could protect the rights of our citizens, all of our citizens. So I'm pretty familiar with the rights of our citizens and what we need. I'm also a little bit familiar with doing what's the right thing. So I don't know if I'll make any difference here tonight, but I just want to be on the record with you all to say that I have a noise problem in my neighborhood. It just happens to be a restaurant that is across the way. So we moved here two years ago. We avoided the Cocoa Beach-type areas because they're more known for bars and excitement and noise and lots of coming and going. We thought Indian Harbor Beach was great because we had people going to school, people going to work, people living quality life. That's what we wanted to be a part of. There's a bar in Satellite Beach known as Maverick 321. Apparently, the leadership of that bar has expanded to another bar behind me. A quote from several people to me and my wife over the past few weeks has been that during construction, the leadership stated multiple times, this will be a Maverick 321 on steroids. Apparently, they're pretty good at it. The original name, I understand, was Finn and Tonic, sounds a lot like gin and tonic, sounds a lot like a bar kind of name. But now it's Tide and Tonic. I'm sure that's a little bit more PC to use as we go along here. The previous restaurants behind my location was a fish restaurant, a steak restaurant, and a fresh food restaurant. None of them, from the stories that I've been told, needed to have a grand opening with a rock concert while my grandchildren were trying to go to sleep. Hurricane doors were mentioned, and it's great first experience with hurricane doors. They really do cut down the noise that you experience on a day-to-day basis. They didn't touch what we were dealing with. The idea is that this is going to continue on and on and on, really does bother me. Bar leadership is focusing on maximizing the outdoor noise because somehow that increases revenue. If they had four walls, a ceiling, and doors, they could keep that noise inside. Their patrons would be happy, their neighbors would be happy. If I made that kind of noise and I had amplified music in my garage, the police would come and I would be given a violation. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. All right, next is Denise Lambert.
Hi, good evening, thank you for having me. I'm Denise Lambert, I live at 123 Lancha Circle. I always hope for businesses, including Tide and Tonic, to be successful, and I've heard this from many neighbors, but not at the expense of our right to a peaceful and quiet enjoyment as Florida condo owners. The chart that the city manager showed a couple of weeks ago shows that residential area is 40 decibels, top right column, and we're residential. These are our homes. I've had decibel readings starting at 65, and I can hear the noise through hurricane-resistant doors. And I should not be forced to listen to any noise such as this that I don't choose in my home, and I can't get away from it. Last Saturday, my decibel readings were from 65 to 89, which I could hear through the closed doors, great room, dining room, and standing in my kitchen. Drums are a huge issue. Anything starting at 65 decibels is an issue. I can, I can hear it through the doors. If this continues, I can't use my lanai in the spring. We've all purchased a home that included pricing for a lanai. We pay real estate taxes on that, and part of those taxes go to the city government. The noise is a nuisance, and it substantially interferes with the use and enjoyment of my property. We are worn out by the noise, we're worn out calling the police, and it has become a mental health issue for some people. Forcing me or anyone to listen to loud noise becomes a mental health issue. On April 23rd, when we were here, Kristen Cole said that she realized that it was the first couple of weeks that it was very loud and that they were going to have acoustical guitar with a singer. If that had been the case on April 23rd, we wouldn't have been here April 23rd, and we would not be here now. Acoustical guitar is unamplified music. And they have amplification, and on many nights, there are drums. And the drum, there should be no drums, they are incredibly loud. Jason Sykes said a couple of weeks ago that he takes a decibel reading at the start of each set. Well, I don't know what that decibel reading is, but I can tell you it never stays the same through a set, it always increases. So I would just like this to be considered, 65 is too much. And I know that you have talked about even more than that, and we are residential. And the, what the city manager showed was 40 for residential. Thank you so much.
Thank you. All right, next is Brenda Calameja. Don't know if I was close on that or not.
Councilmembers, my name is Brenda Calamea, 123 Lancha Circle. I am one of the 48 families who live in the towers facing A1A and therefore Tide and Tonic. Since Tide and Tonic opened, we have been experiencing loud music on our balconies and inside our homes. It's not every night, but it's truly affecting our lives, especially those with small children, elderly parents, and those that work early mornings, especially on the weekends. If an establishment insists on having loud music, it should be their responsibility to soundproof their building. Unfortunately, Tide and Tonic is open air on three sides of an area where the music stage is located. I believe everyone loves music, but no one should be forced to listen to a genre of music they did not choose, at a time they did not choose, and at a volume they did not choose. Imagine yourself sitting on your porch or in your living room enjoying your evening when all of a sudden someone turns on the stereo so loud that your peaceful evening has just been spoiled or that you are not feeling well, and you want to go to bed early but cannot sleep. How does that make you feel? That is our situation. So what is an acceptable decibel level? We need to ask ourselves, what do we feel is appropriate on and in our private spaces? Balcony, living room, bedrooms? We have all been looking at websites and reading articles relating to decibel levels. I'm sure we can all agree that average home noise, 40. Normal conversation or background music, 60. A vacuum being used next to you is 75. And 75 is the readings we're getting on our balconies and inside our homes when the bands are playing, sometimes even higher. So when you all start discussing the acceptable range, we hope that you will err on the side of caution and choose the lowest number. I love this saying, and it resonates with this issue. Give someone an inch and they'll take a mile. Unfortunately, we live in a world where rules and laws are constantly being broken. People push the limits. So please be mindful of how much leeway you want to give because people will take advantage of whatever boundaries you decide to put in place. We are putting our faith in you and the quality of our lives in your hands. Thank you, appreciate your time, and enjoy the rest of your evening.
Thank you. All right, last person is Jason Sykes.
Jason Sykes, 1940, Highway 81, Indian Harbor Beach. First off, I do want to apologize to the residents behind us for Saturday night. We, I, I made the band stop early, 9:25. We did receive a fine at 10:22 later on that evening after I had stopped them. They were a very popular band from Satellite Beach, and they filled our place up. And it was a lot of people, we were at our capacity. And I do want to apologize for it, but I was checking the readings at the beginning, and they were running at 65. The band kept getting louder, I kept trying to tell them to turn it down. So I had the issue all night long, I was trying to take care of it, that's why we stopped them early. I don't know, I know you guys took videos, but I promise you, they did not play after 9:30. And I apologize for that. I'm, I am truly sorry to be in this position right now. I just want to come up to an agreement that's right for both parties. 65 was a number that I was happy with, that that's what I was running. Sixty-five was a number that I was happy with, that that's what I was running with since we opened the doors because the ordinance that I had been given, that's what I read, that I could have sixty-five. So, I always check it. It is the truth at the beginning of every set. I'm there every day. I'm there open to close half the time. So, I have been trying to be mindful with it. I am trying to cut out the drums. I told you guys that before. There are a few bands I booked for the whole year. That's usually how I do my music calendar. So, there's some bands that I pulled off the calendar, but there are a few bands that do draw a good revenue for us that we left on the calendar that do have the drums. So, as far as why I came here today, I didn't realize I was coming up to like defend Saturday night. But for the noise ordinance, from the last meeting that we were at, we talked about some of the changes that we were going into, and I just wanted to show my support on what I liked that I heard and the things that I did not like. The, I don't understand why we're trying to change the time. I mean, it says till, it's ten to seven, I believe. We only play music till nine, Sunday through Thursday, only ten on the weekends. That was something that I didn't like on the ordinance that I saw the draft last week. I saw something about a fine being five hundred dollars or seventy-five dollars right now. We got two at the same time for a hundred and fifty dollars Saturday night, which I once again don't understand. It was ten-twenty-two at night. So, and then the decibel, I, I'm fine with the sixty-five. I, I like that number. I heard seventy last week. Yeah, I like that number two, but I try to stay at sixty-five. Like she said, seventy-two she was getting at. So, if I get to that point where I see it's over seventy, I'm always talking to the band and having them turn it down. I try to adjust as much as I can.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, well, of course, we'll have, we have more discussion to be done on the noise ordinance. We have to consider and something we'll ultimately make a decision on. So, that's where that is right now. And we'll, you know, as we move forward, we'll come, we'll make that decision.
Mayor, if I may say, to the people who live at Lancha Circle, I'll give you my card tonight with my cell phone number on. I will come and listen to what I have to, for my personal, to make a decision, I have to hear what you're hearing myself. So, please come see me after the meeting, and I will come and I will listen. I have to know myself because numbers, forty, sixty. But what I heard is unacceptable for our bedroom community. So, I, I wanted to put that invitation out, let people know.
Okay. Well, with that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, second.
Motion by council, by deputy mayor Gerton, second by councilmember Dyer. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. We are adjourned.
Good job, Mayor.
Yes, sir.